Four would be a motion to approve.
Play or so moves. Lynn seconds.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the agenda. Any questions or discussion on the agenda? All in favor indicate by pushing your button for yes. No? You can release. Okay, the agenda is approved unanimously. Item five is members of the public wishing to be heard. I have two that are, have indicated that. So first, I'll ask for Dean Gallickson to come forward.
No, I'm not going to read this whole book to you. A little different being on this side of the podium. Dean Gallickson, past county board chair, past conservation ward. And I'm here on the issue of the property purchase. And as Paul Harvey says, just want to give us the story here. I would ask the board to vote this down. We had this on our agenda before and it was voted down. And for the same reasons, we still haven't been able to iron out the bugs. They're looking at the Ice Age Trail system to be approximately a five-foot wide corridor from Cornell all the way to Taylor County. Five mile wide. Five mile wide. As we start purchasing this land, and the reason we have the ability to purchase it now is because of classification was made and it's 75% Forest Service. Well, there was a, there was a comment period on that. And I got a letter three days after the comment period was over. And I contacted the administrator and we contacted the DNR and US Forest Service by phone and asked if we could comment because it was held. Now, just for those who are investigative minds, that letter was in my mailbox for the comment period, open. So that matter, that letter had come here and somebody held it. And we never got it in time for the comment period. Then when we requested to be able to comment, they denied it. But we did ask questions on it. And one of the questions that was asked was, would there be hunting allowed in that corridor in the trail? And the Park Service says, no, when we take this over, there will be no hunting. Now, let me give you the gravity of that. That's basically comes up the entire Ice Age Trail system from the southern part of Wisconsin, all the way up over into Washburn and Douglas County. That's not reasonable. And in fact, it's a violation of our Wisconsin Constitution. Section one of the Wisconsin Constitution, the last article, gives, gives the public right to fish, hunt, trap, and take game, section 26. And it was, has created April 2003. That's when that came into effect. So it's also a violation of our constitutional rights. But here's more important, especially for our representatives from the northern part of the county. It affects our tax base. When you start taking those big chunks of land out, it hurts our townships. And I had one town chair tell me, he says, everybody wants to come up here. They want to cross-country ski, they want to hike, they want to do all this. But who's paying for the snow plowing? Us who are left behind. And every time we take big chunks of land off and those people are gone and that tax base is gone. Gone. Our school systems. And we look at the Holcombe School System, and I guess I'm kind of old. I can remember when they were doing some bake sales and stuff there for their school. And now, all of a sudden, if we take this big a chunk out of those school systems, and we're talking Cornell, Holcombe, and I'm not sure if Gilman, this district comes to there or not, this puts a hardship on these folks. We got to remember Chippewa County does go north of Chippewa Falls. And these, these northern towns don't have the population base. And the tax base they have is, is not as robust as what we have here. And so that's why I'm saying vote, vote no for it. Because we can't, I have no problem. Matter of fact, I was at the very first meeting of the Ice Age Trail when the whole thing started. I have no problem with hiking trail. But when that hiking trail starts to gabble, gobble up hundreds and maybe thousands of acres of land, and it starts displacing people and populations so these northern towns can't get money to even plow their roads, we got to stop and take a step back and say, whoa. Three, four feet, folks, I have no problem with. Five miles, I have a huge problem with that. A very huge problem. And now, this is not just here. This is, this is going all the way across. I talked to other county foresters, all the way through Washburn, Douglas, Sawyer County. And some of them are extremely upset about this also. So there's a big communication gap. And for those people who are in the Ice Age Organization, that conversation has to get ironed out before we can move forward. It just, we cannot destroy our tax base by taking big chunks of land off, fully knowing that when that trail gets developed, that it's going to be taken over by the, the Park Service trail system. And then, not only are the hunters going to lose those rights, but that tax base is gone forever. So I'm voting to vote no for that. If the Forest Service decides to come back, or the Park Service come back, then fine. We can sit down and negotiate. But right now, no.
Thank you. Thank you, Dean. And the next we have signed up is Paul Crumener.
Real short and sweet. Just, I'm representing the Chippewa Valley ATV Council and asking for your support on ordinance change for the ATV routes. It's just sections that we need to connect, different roads that were put in place previously. So that's all we're asking for is to support that. So thank you very much. You guys have a good night.
Thank you. And move on to item six is the consent agenda. Look for a motion to approve.
No more moves. Urge on seconds.
Have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Any discussion or comments? Okay, if none, then we will vote to approve. Green to approve, red to approve. Consent agenda is approved. Item seven, reports. Item A, the county administrator review and update. None? Okay. Item B is department reports, extension staff recognition. Kristin?
Good evening. It's so quiet in here. Maybe I can help that. So thank you for giving me the opportunity tonight to come forward and recognize some awards that were given this year to two of our extension educators here in Chippewa County. First, I'd like to take the, this opportunity to introduce myself and a little bit about extension. My name is Kristin Bruder. I serve as the extension director and I serve Chippewa County as well as Eau Claire and Dunn Counties. Extension partners with the county government to bring research-based knowledge and information to the community and to the people. You've likely heard of the Wisconsin Idea. We essentially embody the Wisconsin Idea. And we bring it to life right here in Chippewa County and respond to local needs. Here in Chippewa, you co-invest with UW Madison Division of Extension in human development and relationships, crops and soils, community development, livestock, and 4H programming. Because of this partnership and investment, you receive what I like to call Kohl's Cash. I'm sure people have had Kohl's Cash. It's a FoodWise program, which is a federally funded program that brings nutrition education to people with limited incomes. You also have access to our network of specialists across the state. And this is a value-added resource because of your investment. For example, here in, in the Chippewa Valley, we have two state specialists that are intricately involved in the HSHS closure and the development of the Chippewa Valley Health Cooperative. Extension educators are co-funded with county partners across the state, and they live right here in the county, in the areas that they serve. That furthers their understanding of the issues and opportunities in their communities. So two educators serving Chippewa County recently received awards for their work. So I wanted to share that with you tonight. First, I'd like to introduce Jean Walsh. If you could come up here, Jean. Thank you. Jean is our human development and, human development and relationships educator. She specializes in financial management. Jean received the Community Impact Financial Stability Award, given by the United Way of the Greater Chippewa Valley. Jean was recognized for her outstanding efforts working toward the goal of United Way's Financial Stability Initiative, which is, Chippewa Valley residents will receive self-sufficiency through employment training and personal money management skills. Jean has done this in numerous ways, including financial coaching, where Chippewa County residents meet one-on-one with Jean to create a money management plan based on their priorities. She also teaches a program called Rent Smart that helps participants with negative or limited rental records gain the skills to find and keep safe and affordable housing. Those are just two examples of the many work that Jean does in this area and in other areas as well. Next, we have Jerry Clark. Jerry received the distinguished, the Van Heiss Outreach Teaching Award. As president of the University of Wisconsin from 1903 to 1918, Charles Van Heiss developed the doctrine today known as the Wisconsin Idea. This guiding philosophy of UW Madison's outreach efforts to extend the borders of the university, to touch the lives of people throughout Wisconsin and around the world. Jerry received this award amongst a number of UW Madison professors and outreach specialists. He, Jerry connects farmers, agriculture, industry representatives, clients in Chippewa Counties to UW Madison Research and Resources. To do this, he has adopted new teaching techniques, which includes podcasts, you might have heard, the Cutting Edge podcast for new crops in Wisconsin, as a way of reaching new audiences. A few of Jerry's programming efforts in Chippewa focuses on forage and grain production and management, nitrogen management to protect farm profitability and ground and surface water quality, and emerging crops and cropping systems to provide information and local research. I'd like to congratulate both Jean and Jerry, and I'd like to invite them to just say a few words.
It's really my privilege to bring financial education and financial resources to all of our families throughout Chippewa County. And this United Way Spirit Award really represents the many impactful partnerships that UW Madison Extension and Chippewa County create within our community. So thank you for your continued support.
Yeah, this was a pretty humbling award. Those of us in Extension don't get recognized at the University of Madison level very often. And this was very humbling since we have so many great educators across the county and, across the state. And to represent Chippewa County, my whole career has been, has been great. The support that this board, as well as our, our past boards have provided to Extension and the programming, that allows us to do the programming across the county and individually has been pretty impactful. So it's been a great career. Been, I think I'm starting my 27th year last week. So hopefully got a few more in the tank yet. But it's been a, a great career. And this award, like I said, has been very humbling to me. And it wouldn't have been possible without the support of the Chippewa County Board. So appreciate it very much.
Thank you very much. As I said previously, my exposure to the county staff and stuff here in this position has just been so much more widespread. And the fact that some of them are being recognized at a state level is not a surprise at all. And it's just, it's just, it's just great to see. It reflects the type of people we have working here. Next, we'll go on to item C, general report connecting the Ice Age Trail through Chippewa County. Kevin?
Thank you, Chairperson Hall. Thanks, county board members. Really appreciate you having me here today to talk a little bit about the Ice Age National Scenic Trail. It is my pleasure to do so. My name is Kevin Thuzius. I'm the Senior Director of Land Conservation for the Ice Age Trail Alliance. Ice Age Trail Alliance is a nonprofit organization I'll talk a little bit more about in a minute. I've been here for over 20 years. I've been doing land acquisition work and land protection work for about 15 years. Been working with Chippewa County that, that entire time, happy to say. One of our key partners along the Ice Age National Scenic Trail. Little primer before we talk about some specifics is just what is the Ice Age National Scenic Trail? I'm not going to assume that you all know it. There's what, 21 board members here today? Ice Age National Scenic Trail is a thousand-mile footpath tracing basically the last glaciation across the state of Wisconsin. We offer opportunities like you see right there on that photo. And I always get the question, why does it have such a goofy shape? Why is, why, if you just wanted to go from Minnesota to Door County, it could have been like 600 miles? Well, it follows the, typically follows the terminal moraine of the last glaciation. So it has that funny shape, as you can see, because of that. Except for over in the eastern part of the state where it follows the inter-lowbait moraine. Some things you see along the trail, it's a national scenic trail. It's this because it has great scenery, including here in Chippewa County, of course. Kettles or radics. If you've been to Chippewa Moraine Reserve, you've certainly been on an ice-walled lake plain, something that the glaciers left behind. They call it the Wisconsin Glaciation, the last one, because it did leave so much more impact here than anywhere else in the world. And so we're very proud of our geologic heritage. What does it offer? Well, the Ice Age Trail is essentially free. I mean, you may have to park if you're on a state property, but it's widely accessible to a lot of different users. You don't need a whole lot of equipment to get out and use the Ice Age Trail. There are obvious physical benefits for hiking and walking on the Ice Age Trail. I think a lot of us realize the mental health benefits of being outside, especially during the COVID-19 pandemic. I swear, in those two months in 2020, I got more complaints about new users than I did in the last 20 years combined. So I was really happy, once we fixed some issues, happy to see folks getting out there and using the trail. It's a corridor for critters. So rare and endangered plants, animals, deer, not so endangered, but they also love to use the trail and the land that's protected right around the trail. So it's a great way for connecting landscapes across the state. And of course, there's an economic benefit. We've seen our membership at the organization increase about 60, I'm sorry, over two times since 2022. And the usership increased about the same. So we recently commissioned a study with UW Whitewater, and they're going to get the number back to us, but it's somewhere around $4 million economic impact for the state that trail offers. I wanted to keep this slide in here because Cornell is one of our more recent Ice Age Trail communities. We're very proud to have Cornell as one of them. And you're going to hear a little bit today, or quite a bit, about partnerships. Well, here's one example of how we partner with a local municipality. We offer them some things like website and social media events. We offer up once a, a year Mammoth Hike event where the Cornell will feature, will be featured in our outreach efforts, along with the other communities. And in, in exchange, they agree to pay us a small amount of money, or relatively small amount of money, I will say, a couple thousand dollars maybe, and for a lifetime benefit of being an Ice Age Trail community. And they put that sticker in the window and they get to sort of sell their wares. I was just up there earlier today. So then the Ice Age, so that's a little bit about the trail. The Ice Age Trail Alliance, we're a nonprofit organization. We get primary, get, get our funding from members and donors. And that's our operational funding. We also get some, a little bit of money from the state through grants process and a little bit of money from the National Park Service. We do partner with the National Park Service. Park Service only owns two properties across the entire trail, one in Dane County, one in Langley County. But they have some oversight for the trail on, in a grand scale and help with the planning, which I'll talk about in a moment. And then the DNR typically manages. They have the most trail on their property, around 250 miles of trail on state property. So we work exclusively, a lot with them for managing the Ice Age Trail on their properties. We are, our lifeblood, one of them's back here in the audience, is our volunteers. She might even be in one of those pictures. Building and maintaining the Ice Age National Scenic Trail. We're very proud that last year, we had over 100,000 volunteer hours on the Ice Age Trail throughout the state, the first time we eclipsed that. And that's more than big parks like Yellowstone and Yosemite. So we're really proud to have had those volunteers out donating their own time to the trail. A little bit about trail and land management. We, I say trails, about 700 miles of the trail is done and on the ground right now. And we figured it'd be about 1,200 miles when it's all said and done. So there's about another 500 miles to go from the western terminus in St. Crey Falls to the eastern terminus in Sturgeon Bay. The trail passes through, we were, we used our GIS to determine at least 1,500 properties along that way. And that's state, county, city, village, lot of private land through, through easements, through handshake agreements, our properties, we own some properties. And we, I did an estimate, we helped manage about 10,000 acres. So us and our volunteers helped manage the properties along the trail. So if it's on, we recently acquired a property with the state, and we are already doing restoration efforts there, down in Waukesha County, where we're already starting to do some, what you see on the right there, burning a little bit. And then, of course, the alliance owns some properties. We own about 3,000 acres. And we do allow other uses on almost every property. We do allow hunting on almost every property. There are some properties, our properties and a couple of state properties where there's a buffer around the trail, 100-yard buffer, so 300-foot buffer where there's no hunting. But by and large, I mean, I didn't do the stats, but I would estimate 90% of the properties, or maybe more, allow for hunting than when we acquire them for the trail. Certainly, if we use state funding, they require hunting. Other uses, we do allow snowmobile trails to go across our properties. We've, we share them as, to the degree that we are able, while preserving the National Scenic Trail scene or feel of the property. It was mentioned earlier in some of the, the public comment period about the corridor plan. I heard a quote this morning that I absolutely love. Planning is great, the plan, not so much. The process can be great, and the process can also have errors. And I think there was some errors back at that process. I wasn't too involved with it, my, was not my role on staff at that time. But it started in 2002, I think it was, and after a hiatus, or 2005, after a bit of a hiatus, it rekindled in 2012. And at that point, there was a couple of open house meetings, public meetings, 2013 and 14. And the question was, how do we get from, oh, I do have a pointer, look at that. How do we get from Cornell down to the Taylor County line? We didn't plan the Northwest, and I couldn't tell you why, but I guess for a future day. But we planned from Cornell to the Taylor County line. The process was led by the National Park Service in conjunction with the Ice Age Trail Alliance, Chippewa County, DNR, and the public. There were two open house meetings that the public attended. That process, and I'm being brief on this process, but it took way longer than it should have. It started with a corridor plan, something like this, where there are two options, sort of a general north option, a general south option. Maybe, maybe this is where the, the misconception came to five miles of, of trail. But it's not the case at all. These were the two planned corridors after public comment period. We enabled it, narrowed it down to this. This is what we call the corridor of opportunity. There's no way us, or Park Service, or anybody else is going to buy the land, all the land in there. We don't want to, we wouldn't. What we're looking for is, within this corridor, what are the best routes for the trail? So we are looking for a meeting with private landowners who are willing, interested in working with us. We're looking for glacial features. You'll see some reddish features in the middle there. Well, it's not working great, but you can see some reddish features. That's, shows some ice-walled lake plains and some escars and some other glacial features that we may want to aim for as our primary location for the trail. And we're looking at, now I can tell you that we are now looking south of Otter Lake. So the whole part north of Otter Lake is probably out the window. But this corridor opportunity gave us a chance to get in front of the public and talk about the trail, what it might mean, where it might go, who's interested, who's not. And try to avoid landowners that are not interested and others, and, and talk with people that are. And we have, we've made connections with several landowners in this corridor, by and large, positive. So, so now that this plan is, is completed again in 2017, we have a group of folks, these are mostly local volunteers, some, some folks that may be, yeah, local volunteers in Chippewa County and myself. And sometimes we talk with staff at DNR and staff here at Chippewa County as well. And we try to figure out who might be willing to work with us. And so there's 23 miles, 23.3 miles of Ice Age Trail currently in the county. And that's by and large from Cornell west to Highway 40. And an estimated 35 miles yet to go. So we're not quite halfway. So I have job security, which is real, real nice. Family's happy about that. But we do rely on local volunteers. We work with the local communities. We did, when we did a transaction by Otter Lake some years back, met with the, the town there and the, the fishing club, the booster club, worked, talked to them. And we, and we work with willing sellers only. We don't take land. Ice Age Trail Alliance is a nonprofit, we can't. But even our Park Service partners and DNR partners don't. We've never used eminent domain, we don't take land. And I know that's a misconception out there as well, and I want to just make sure that has not happened. And I don't think it ever would or could, for obvious reasons. We all know it will take decades. It took a long time for the trail to be made and the glacier to recede. And we know this is going to take a long time to complete these gaps. And we continue to work with partners. Without this, without partners, this project is not going to happen. So we're going to work with Chippewa County, county forester, and other partners to help connect the dots. And of course, funding. Funding can be a, an impediment to acquiring land. We do use a lot of state stewardship funding, but we used about $3 million in private funding over the last four years as well to acquire lands. And I just wanted to provide one example. I don't think this is up for a vote. I don't, but, and, so I don't know if this, what, what was referred to earlier about a vote. But this is a project where we are actually going to, we haven't even finished the application for the county. We're close. We haven't finished the application. But here's a, just, I wanted to provide one example of what we're up to in the area. This is a property that was on the market. We saw it, one of our volunteers saw it in October of '23. It was just a sign out front. We made a couple of calls and we got, quickly got an option on it. We got an appraisal and made it, the appraisal made it. And we acquired the property right away in December using all private funds. It's about a 74-acre property. We have applied for state stewardship funds. We will be applying for the county land, our land stewardship funds. And then we'll, we'll look at trail construction and maybe a parking lot on the east side on County AH as early as next year. And I just don't pay too much attention to that yellow line. It's already changed since our, since I did it, somebody with real trail experience got out there and made a better line. But, but this is something that it would look like. And there's a view of the property looking toward one of the, beautiful, beautiful property. We'll call it the Otter Lake Preserve. This will provide folks in the area with an opportunity to park and get out and, and spend a nice, an hour or two roaming around a beautiful stretch of land. And at that point, I'm happy to answer any questions from anybody.
Supervisor Hanni?
Sir, that, that red enclosed area you just showed?
Here?
You own everything inside the red?
Yes, correct.
And how many acres?
74.
And what is the width approximately?
That's a 40 width, I think so. That's 1,230, 1,230 feet.
Is that taken off the tax rolls?
It is not. If we own it, it typically is not taken off the tax roll. Or I shouldn't say typically, about 50/50 whether or not we take properties off the tax roll. Depends if we work with the local government, in this case, the town of Colburn. I think I said Osborne earlier, but town of Colburn. And, and we, and we'll sometimes pay them fee in lieu of taxes especially, for the town. So we have three options. Totally off the tax roll, which we, as a nonprofit, we could. Pay a fee in lieu of taxes, which we typically do to the township, or pay full taxes. And all those are options. If we make money on the property, we typically pay full taxes. So if we're to use it, save it for timber management or, or egg management, we typically do pay taxes on it. We haven't made a decision on this property yet. We are, we just bought it in December.
Of all your properties that you have?
Yep.
Would you be able to, to enlighten the board of where they fall in the recap?
Sure.
Maybe not tonight, because I know that probably takes research.
Yeah, I think, I can give you a rough estimate about two-thirds are tax exempt, one-third we pay on, and a handful we, we pay a fee in lieu of.
So the two-thirds that are tax exempt?
Yep.
How many, how much acres is that? And how much acres have we taken off the county, city, village?
Yeah. Yeah, if you do an estimate of, I'm guessing statewide, that is probably under 2,000 acres, maybe 1,800 acres total statewide? Rough estimate. And the value of that, one of them's in Dane County, and that one's probably worth $4 million, that one property. So I don't know what the tax value would be on that. We do pay, and actually, I take it back, that one we pay a fee in lieu of taxes on to the, so. So there's, there's a range. And if you wanted more detail, I could probably provide the detail on another day. But that's a rough estimate.
I think that'd be a good idea.
Okay. Thank you.
Supervisor Gearing?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Supervisor Gearing. My question is, this action that you're asking for us to take, is this time-sensitive in any way?
I'm presenting here today, supervisor, but I'm I'm presenting here today, Supervisor, but I'm not asking for any action today. This was a presentation that the County Forest Administrator had asked. I was in front of this board so many years ago, you probably, maybe, maybe none of you were there at that time, when we closed on another property in the south of the lake, but I haven't been here since. And so one of the things that we wanted to do was just present an update. Where is the Ice Age Trail in Chippewa County? What's the update since that plan completed in 2017? And I think we were going to come back and do sort of a barnstorming tour in 19 and 20, and things happened then, so we're making up for lost time. But today, I'm not asking for any action. The project I present right there will, I think, come to the board at some point, or maybe not, maybe it goes to committee? Committee, okay. That'll go to a committee, I guess, I don't know the county process for that.
Thank you.
Thanks for the question.
Supervisor Schubridge?
I've heard different names and organizations tied in with this. So all said and done, who owns it? Is there any government liens or contracts or regulation, or tie, you, nonprofit, they buy it, but are they signing any agreements with the federal government or state governments?
Yeah, it's a great question, thanks. We buy it as a nonprofit. This one will, because we're seeking state funding, assuming we're successful in that endeavor, there will be a state contract on it. Much like if the county buys county forest land, there's a state contract that comes with some requirements. There's also a county contract if we're successful in getting the county fundings, funding as well, in the form of an easement. So those two will be the, the two parts tied to this property as, as planned. Nothing with the National Park Service, nothing else, I guess I should say, with DNR, other than that grant management contract that comes with the funding.
Okay, any more questions? Supervisor, Guzman?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Question in regard to the statements about working with those landowners that are receptive. What happens, I mean, is the trail already marked, and you already know that all of those folks are interested, or this is to be worked out along the time, and you may have to do another swoop because somebody may not be receptive?
Yeah, this, this is the sausage-making part of my job. We do have sort of a preferred route, and we typically work road to road. And if that doesn't work, we go and start again. So option A, option B, option C. If we've done everything, we said, okay, well, let's leave and go over here. With 500 miles yet to go, I'm still kept pretty busy with options A and B. But yeah, that's the, the general process, trying to work road to road, work at our best option first, larger landowners, for instance, and then if those don't work, then we look elsewhere.
And, thank you. And then one other additional question. When you come back to provide that information on the various taxes, whether, whatever situation that that may be, has there been any studies in regard to return on investment, economic investment in regards to persons' health, and how that also interplays into all of that as well? I mean, you mentioned mental health and the physical activity. We know that our health insurance rates and all of our conditions are also at risk. So sometimes we don't always measure that particular economic and health benefit.
Yeah, thank you, it's a wonderful question. I, you know, I've often come up here and done presentations like this to counties or towns or cities, villages, and, and have made that point, that there are, the Ice Age Trail brings these aspects of quality of life to a community. And, and, you know, and sometimes it costs. I mean, it costs to put roads in, somebody mentioned, and it costs to, to have an infrastructure like this in place that folks can go and walk their dog, or they got the cabin up the road, they get a chance to go come down here and walk, or if they're in Stanley and they need to get out of town after school and take a break, this is what that offers. And so there are those aspects. Is there a study? There are studies that show health benefits, there are studies that show economic benefits. Do I have a study that shows those directly tied to Ice Age Trail and the trial projects? Other than the one I mentioned earlier about economic development, no, there's no specific study. But I will say that where we have applied for tax exemption and received it, because it's an application process, we don't automatically, we aren't guaranteed it, we've had very little resistance, and, but we have had some discussions about it like this today. And I think those are healthy discussions, where we can talk about the benefits, that cost any associated cost. So, thank you.
Supervisor Hannick?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. What the previous speaker told about this large path block of land, is there any way to prove or disprove that to the satisfaction of the board?
To, just, oh, you mean like the five-mile-wide stuff?
Yes.
Oh. You could look at any other county along the trail. The, the widest parts of the entire trail are in already established county-state properties. I think of the Kettle Moraine down in southeastern Wisconsin, I think of county forest in the northern tier of Wisconsin. Those are already established. When I'm acquiring land, I'm hopeful, when I do easements, I get about 50 feet. When I buy land like this, I love it when we get a quarter mile wide, that's great. I don't know of anywhere where we've purchased wider. Oh, no, I, there's a couple of places where we've big tracts of land, but they're usually like, Lincoln County, we did the Newwood Wildlife Area. That was something that the state did some years back, and so that was pretty wide. But it's, we're working with parcel-by-parcel or property-by-property basis. There's just no, there's just nothing out there to show anywhere where we've worked five miles wide. And if you, in the corridor planning itself, or the corridor plan itself, it talks a little bit about the specific, going property by property and not getting the entire, and it's not, it's like, I think, one to three miles, but it's not even, not even get that, not even getting that wide.
Are you familiar with the Appalachian Trail?
I am.
That brought a lot of economic benefit up and down Georgia to Maine. Do you anticipate any of those same benefits happening down the road, this trail?
Yeah, I, I think they're happening today. I live in a small village, 4,000 people, 5,000 now, cross plains, and I go to the coffee shop more often than I probably should. And I can tell you that the owner of that coffee shop swears up and down that the Ice Age Trail was one of the reasons that saved her business during tough times during COVID. So it happens. I mean, do I, do I think Cornell is going to be coming a booming, booming metropolis because of the Ice Age Trail? You know, probably not. It'll become that for other reasons, but not, Ice Age Trail will be just one of them. But, no, I, I think that, yeah, we're already seeing that. And especially, the one thing about the Ice Age Trail that it can bring, I think, is year-round use too. If you have a bad snow year, as somebody who snowbells too, I mean, you could still go walk. You know, if you have a bad spring, you can still go walk. If you have a bad winter, you can ski or snowshoe it. So the year-round aspect of it, we did one other study last year, we had a Ice Age, or a Mammoth Tales hike, Mammoth Hike Challenge in October, and we had over 8,000 participants, and we asked them, they, they responded, or some of them responded. Something like 20% of them visited Cornell that responded. So that's just a small representative, you know, example of the 7,000 that went out there. So, yeah, we're seeing some direct impacts. That UW Whitewater study will come out soon, hopefully that'll show us some, some more information.
Thank you.
Thanks for the question.
Any questions? Thank you very much. Let's move on to item eight, the business items. Item one is Resolution 29-24, Resolution to Support Community Hospital in Chippewa
Resolution number 29-24, Resolution to Support the Location of a Community Hospital in Chippewa County and to Authorize $70,000 to be Used by Chippewa Valley Health Cooperative to Complete a Financial Feasibility Study. Now therefore, it resolves that the Chippewa County Board of Supervisors fully supports the efforts of the Chippewa Valley Health Cooperative to address the healthcare issues raised by the HSHS and PRAEA closures, and hereby authorizes $70,000 of funding to the cooperative to use to complete a financial feasibility study to determine how to move forward with the creation of a community hospital in Chippewa County. And be it further resolved that the Chippewa County Board of Supervisors believes that the residents of Chippewa County need and deserve a community hospital located in Chippewa County to meet the healthcare needs of our residents. And be it further resolved that the Chippewa County Administrator and the Chippewa County Corporation Council are hereby authorized and directed to execute any agreement between Chippewa County and the Chippewa Valley Health Cooperative to provide $70,000 to the Chippewa Valley Health Cooperative for the purpose of conducting a financial feasibility study for the community hospital, forwarded to the county board by the Executive Committee.
Leader meets motion to accept, motion to accept $70,000 proposal?
Approve the resolution. You have a motion to approve the resolution in a second?
Supervisor Bergeron, seconds.
You have a motion in a second to approve Resolution 29-24. Now we'll have a discussion.
Thanks, Chair. Good evening, my name is Randy Schultz, I'm the Chippewa County Administrator. We all know the story, obviously, when HSHS and PRAEA pulled out of our community and some of the impacts that, that's caused across the county, across the region, and for our county proper, if you will, for our operations. Through that process, Chippewa Valley Health Cooperative was put together, and their purpose is to try and bring a hospital back to the area. We've been in contact with them, we've had meetings with them. Throughout this whole process, probably the most frustrating thing is everybody wanting to do something and not knowing what to do, or how to do it, or if we can do something. So when they contacted me about their next step, really, their, kind of the first step was to organize, get a tax-exempt determination, and then, in order to move forward with financing, they need a feasibility study. Essentially, they have to prove, my understanding, how this works, they have to prove to the banks, whoever's going to invest, that this hospital is, is doable and viable in the region. So when they asked us for that, I asked them what the cost was, they said about $140,000. What I came up with, can we do 70,000 out of our land development fund? Our land development fund is what we're using for the future business park. We got about 3 million, about 3.5 million in there currently. And then I came up with the idea, good or bad, I'm not sure, but as, walking in the morning, I come up with my ideas that my staff loves sometimes, and sometimes don't. But I thought, we're trying to build this morgue, we got a tentative cost on the morgue, it's very expensive. I assumed hospitals needed a morgue, so I reached back out to them and said, what if we do 70,000 in exchange for the use of a morgue? We pay for supplies, those kinds of costs, but really be able to utilize it, because our morgue went away when, when HSHS left Chippewa County. So they have agreed to that in principle, I guess, we don't have anything in writing, anything like that, but I think they're, you know, a very good group to, to work with, has been my experience so far. And I do have two members here from the cooperative, if you have questions for them, they're more than willing to come up and answer. But that's really the idea behind the resolution. Oh, one more thing. I did check, because it came on an exec, if they reached out to other municipalities, they're currently going to do that. I did have the town of Lafayette reach out to me and say, thank you that we've come up with this idea, they thought it was a great idea, the chair there, and he is going to actually go to their board and see if they are willing to put some money towards our 70,000. So they, they reached out to us, we didn't reach out to them. So I thought that was very positive. I've gotten more ink on this than probably any, any subject matter I've ever brought up, and requested for interviews more than you can imagine. So it's been a very positive thing from the community so far. Any questions?
Supervisor Garing?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I don't want to be mistaken here, and I wouldn't want to mislead the rest of the board. At the Executive Committee, wasn't there a reference to the possibility of Northern Eau Claire County also?
Yeah, that's, I said the region. So they're, they're, they're here, if you want to come on up, Bob or Patty, they can talk to that. But my understanding is they're looking northern Eau Claire County, southern Chippewa County. But they could, they can answer that.
I'm Patty Darley, I'm vice chair of the Chippewa Valley Health Cooperative, and this is Bob, of course, I'm going to...
I'm Bob Crowsey, resident of northern Chippewa County.
What's the question?
Well, I, at the Executive Committee, it was discussed about the possibility of this ending up in northern Eau Claire County. And this only makes reference to Chippewa County. I didn't want to be misunderstanding, and I didn't want anybody else on the board to misunderstand.
We're looking at up to five different parcels right now in both counties. I would say the likelihood of it being in Chippewa is a very high percentage, because of various reasons, not just because of the loss of St. Joe's and what that's meant for all of us, but there's other reasons. We, we need to have a rural status for the hospital, because we get better reimbursements, and we get better, there, there's better programs for us if we're rural. Chippewa County is entirely rural.
And Eau Claire County is not. Doesn't meet the designation for a rural location.
My preference would be.
Yeah. And seven of us got together, and we formed this committee, and we have advisors, physician advisors, who have, are, volunteered to, they're going to provide services once we get this hospital built. But the money that you, that you're giving us, and thank you for that, we're spending on this feasibility study because the lenders want it. Once we start fundraising, they're going to want it, and there's other parties that want the pro forma. And one reason I'm on, on this committee is I want to make sure that it's sustainable. And this is a cooperative ownership. So the decisions are going to be made in our communities, the profits are going to be reinvested, and they're not going to go down to some, some other kingdom in Illinois or, or Minnesota. They're staying here. Community-based, community governed. But we're going to let any, we're going, will allow any licensed physician to work there. And that's not the case now, because many of the physicians do not have admission rights to the hospitals that are in the Chippewa Valley. Jim, you got any questions?
I think you nailed it pretty good, Bob.
Supervisor Sidlitz?
Mine goes right over the top of Garing's. I do really support this and everything, but I just wanted to let everybody on this board know that it is a possibility you can end up in, you know, Eau Claire County, but I do support this, because I think the risk is, we really need, need to have a hospital system back in this area, some more help with our morgue and other things like that. But I just wanted to clarify, just as Garing did, that it possibly could end up in Eau Claire County if we, you know, do approve the 70,000 dollars.
I can't officially say no to that, but unlikely. And, and this is not a competitive situation. Eau Claire, we're going to go to Eau Claire and ask them too. This is not one county, this is impacting 15 counties.
And I think when we talk to the Executive Committee, is that we'd still get to utilize the morgue, no matter what county it ended up in, so that's really crucial for Chippewa
Supervisor Guzman?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I really appreciate you all being here and for your initiatives. I am definitely in support of, especially in a rural critical access hospital. I'm hoping that with the feasibility study, that there would be some consideration about what it looks like in regards to the populations, that would be served in the more rural areas that would be served by a rural critical access hospital. Where I'm going with this specifically is that, when I looked at Eau Claire and Chippewa Falls area hospital utilization and capacity summary, Sacred Heart and St. Joe's accounted for approximately 30% of total hospitalization. And of that, most of them were in medical assistance or Badger Care. So we have an issue in regard to, how are we going to continue to make sure that we have, I think you used the word sustainability. So in the feasibility study, my question is, will those particular pieces in regards to the demographics, knowing that because we're a much more agricultural population, we're an aging population, and we also have a population of folks that haven't had as much higher levels of income, and also their insurance companies paying as well, knowing that that's going to be the population that's going to be served by the critical access hospital if we are successful in a more rural...
Sure. The, the company that is doing the feasibility study is out of Minneapolis, and they are taking data from the Wisconsin Hospital Association, five years from the Chippewa, and, well, the Chippewa Valley community, the people that have used all the hospitals here. They're doing it by procedures, by every demographic, and by the payer mix. The payer mix is a real problem, and we understand that. And we know that to make this successful, we have to have some of the high, higher-paying procedures done in the hospital. And that has been a big discussion with the doctors, and they agree that they are in support of this and want to support this hospital. They need it.
So additional follow-up question, if I may? And in regard to that, if I take a look again at this report, St. Joe's provided the majority of the AODA hospitalizations and issues, as well as Sacred Heart also providing that type of care. So, you know, there's other resources... type of care, so, you know, there's other resources that look at the payer population mix, and rural health information, how about the University of Minnesota has really good data and information, so I just would encourage that, whatever the discussions go forward with, that we also look at that piece, because the last thing that I think our communities want to do, is to lose anything that would be set up for a critical access hospital, and be in the same situation five years from now. That would devastate the people that need to have this service, so, sorry, I'm just pretty passionate about making sure...
We agree 100%, matter of fact, you could do a commercial for us. Because, you know, you're that positive, but we're gonna look at all those things, and if we do this, we don't want it to fail. It can't fail, that's not our mission, this is gonna work. And the location, you'll be happy with the location, you just gotta trust us on that. We're going forward, because, you know, when it happened, Chippewa has no ER. That's why I got in this board, that's not right. And by the way, we both served at different times on the hospital boards, so we have some knowledge, mine goes back a lot further, but, so, we have some knowledge on the system.
We have an understanding of, like, the payer mix, you save the demographics of the two areas, and what St. Joe's and Sacred Heart covered, at, you know, when they were here. So, and all of that's being taken into consideration, and most of the doctors that are in, well, behind us, have, they did their practices through Sacred Heart and St. Joseph's, so they know what, they have, you know, they have the history there too, so they understand. Some of the services that might not be in the hospital itself, we're gonna be partnering with other people, because our mission as this cooperative, is to bring the services that we've lost back to our area. We need an emergency room, we need doctors, we need cancer care, you know, imagine somebody having to go to the cities or Madison to get their cancer care, because it's not here anymore, when they're in those terrible situations, so. We're all pretty passionate about it, we're all volunteers, and we come from different walks of life, and the doctors, and the people, like the people from the extension office, from the University of Wisconsin are helping us enormously.
And they've been great.
Yeah, they're awesome.
They're like paid consultants, but we're not paying them, so they've been fantastic.
So, it's been great.
Hey, thank you Chuck, can I have a commercial? Can I do one commercial? We opened up...
Question.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
If you look up here, these are, we'll put their names up, Supervisor Henick, we have lots of interest in this.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Most of my questions were answered from your previous answer, but I have one question. A number of hospitals are limiting the amount of paper, people on Badger Care and Medicare. The state of Wisconsin has not accepted federal Medicare funding. Do you anticipate limiting the amount of patients in the lower Badger Care and Medicare?
No, we're gonna have a variety of patient mix, and I'm not an expert on that, but we've already said that publicly, so that's our plan, and we can't change what the state does. We're trying to reestablish a hospital in Chippewa County.
I just want to say this from my heart, thank you for your efforts. You're doing a good job.
Got a couple more questions, so. Could you go in the microphone, please, because we're live streaming? Supervisor Schubert.
Oh, they're live streaming?
Yes.
Uh, go ahead.
I think you answered my two questions, one, you're gonna go into Eau Claire County to get the other half of the $140,000.
Not necessarily the other half, maybe they'll give us the whole thing. I'm not afraid to ask people for money, but we're gonna go to other counties, we're, our demographics actually cover 15 counties in Chippewa Valley, so I'm not sure I'm gonna ask for half there, maybe we'll ask for the whole caboodle, because, believe me, this is expensive, I'm burning through about $45,000 a month. We have some people that stepped forward right away to give us some of that funding, and that funding is simply for planning. We're not buying concrete, or anything like that, this is all planning, but the people that we're hiring, they're expensive, and we have to have good people, because we don't have two chances at this, we have one chance.
And so, my second question is that, if this does end up in Eau Claire County, how does that impact our economic development here? Is that gonna hurt businesses coming in here, because we don't have that ER here, technically, maybe five miles down the road, but it's on the other side of the border, is that gonna hurt us, just because we don't have it in our county?
Yeah, I'm not sure if I can answer that honestly, but the real impact is twofold right now. Number one, we have employees that have been displaced, so we're losing that, we want to get that employment back in here. And number two, and I don't have a measurement on this, but this really bothers me, we were forecast to have 770 babies delivered by the two hospitals. Well, those moms are still gonna have those babies, but they're being pushed to other places, and I've, my understanding is they're being pushed as far as Duluth. Now, that might be a, that might sound like an inconvenience, but it's more than that, because when those moms go someplace, the families go with them, and all that economy goes with them, and we're losing it here.
And what's the, do you have a general ETA, if we, you know, improve this or anything going well, is this gonna be running?
I wanna, we wanna break ground this year yet. Now, it might be snowing out, but we wanna try to do it this year, but once we start, it's gonna take minimum of three years. Now, the other thing you may want to know is, we're also very interested in a cancer center, because that was pulled out too. Oh, I got a side note here, we walked through with Randy, St. Joseph's, about two months ago, after we did that, we tried to assess it, and we made them an offer to buy that hospital, because we thought that would be a good bridge, not a long-term bridge, but a short-term bridge for ER and birthing. They didn't even answer us, so we pulled back, we took away the offer, and we gave them three weeks with no answer. The other thing we did just recently, is we contacted them, and again, we made an off, well, in this case, it was a letter of intent, we said, "We will lease the cancer center in Eau Claire," because there was up to 200 patients, they were displaced. We sent a letter to the realtor, because that's how they preferred, we talked to them, and we said, "We'll lease that, if you sell it, tell us to get out, we'll get, we can lease, take care of those patients." They came back to us within an hour this time, and said, "No, we're not interested." So, we're trying things, but we're still, our mission is still focused, and we're gonna get it done. Did I answer your question?
Supervisor Lutz.
Supervisor Lutz, thank you, Chairman. You've kind of answered some of my questions, but how long does the feasibility study take?
Six to eight weeks, and we're all really anxious to get it done. So, they have to get all the data from the state, and then they have to interview the doctors, many doctors, and all the players in the area, so it takes a while, and then they come back to us, and they run all those numbers, and then they tell us, well, yeah, this is how you're gonna succeed, and this is how size-wise we think you should be. We have a good idea from the, all the people that we're working with, the consultants, of the size of the hospital that we would build, but they'll come back and tell us, they'll have more information, so.
Okay, and then, because of the close proximity to Eau Claire and the two hospitals that are there, does it have to be in Chippewa, or could it be, like, centrally located, like, in the middle of the county, so that it's not, you know, really close to the other hospitals, but that other people in the northern part of the county could get there?
It's gonna be something that, it's gonna be a location that can be easily accessed by all the communities.
Okay, and then, well, HSHS, I don't understand why they're not responding to anything, and...
Either do we.
And has Mayo or Marshfield reached out to help with...
No, not yet, but I'll ask them, they should help us too.
I'm just wondering if they know something that we don't.
I don't know, you know what though, I hear bar talk every day. I gotta focus, we gotta focus on what we're doing, we need a hospital.
Right.
Supervisor Mueller.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to say, I want to thank you both for coming, and especially what you were just saying, I'm sure eventually everyone's gonna have a story like me that says, "A friend of mine had a medical emergency, and got into the ambulance, and they said, 'Oh, don't have, you know, can't take you here,' went to the law so."
That's why I'm doing this, because of that.
I thank you.
And it's up to us to do it.
Supervisor Flynn.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I've been fortunate enough to sit on the chamber committee, once the HSHS closings happened, and I've gotten a good education, and you guys came and presented to us before, and you guys have been good community leaders for some time, so I appreciate you stepping up, especially our administrator too, I mean, this, he's been right in there, communicating with everybody, talking with everybody, I mean, it's been a real pleasure to watch somebody passionate enough about trying to get a hospital back into our community. I say, you know what, definitely I support the feasibility study, you can go up to Oakleaf now and look at their urgent care, since they extended their hours, and you can say, "Hey, go sit right there, and you'll see the need that's in our community to have an ER or a hospital." And again, you know, our EMS has just been running ragged, you know, some people alluded to that, so I mean, if it's located in northern Eau Claire, or if it's in Chippewa, it's gonna benefit all of us anyways, most of us travel somewhere else. I do remember, though, in some of those studies through the chamber, part of the problem that happened in Eau Claire is that you gotta get three hospitals for a community that size, so I'm pretty confident that, you know, it's gonna probably, hopefully, come this way, and I did get my email to make my contribution of $25, which I thought was a heck of an investment, and I liked the way you put it, "You're probably not gonna get a return like your Green Bay Packers stock, but you're investing in a one-time fee of 25 bucks," and I think it was 104 physicians, so I appreciate the work that you're doing, and, you know, hopefully it does come to Chippewa County, and again, I appreciate everybody's work in this, because it's a lot of work. I mean, I sell insurance for a living, somebody mentioned, you know, Medicare, I can say I have about 300 Medicare supplement people, and probably 50% use the Oakleaf system, so I mean, if you're wondering about if they're accepting this or that, they do, so.
And by the way, we are members of the chamber, proud member.
So, your commercial, oh, are we done with questions?
Okay.
That's it, okay, yeah, here's my commercial, we just started a membership drive last week, so thanks for that intro, and we just started it last week, I think we have about 150 members, it costs $25, lifetime membership, it goes on forever. I'm gonna leave my card with Randy, so if you wanna be part of this, please go to this, to our website, and become a member, $25, and you'll get information then, on what we're doing in the future. And tell your friends and neighbors, they have to live in the Chippewa Valley, but they're welcome to join. The more members we get, it's gonna be easier for us, when we go to people in office, if we go to people who are gonna lend us money, they like seeing members, and we're a cooperative, nonprofit cooperative, we have not started our fundraiser yet, because we want to get our feasibility study done, but once we get that done, you'll see...
We'll be up and running. Another thing is, as a member, you are the people who are running the hospital, so we'll have a board that will be elected by the members, and then, the local, the hospital will be controlled locally, so it's all a part of what a co-op is, and that's, we wanted to keep it in the community.
And the process here too, don't go somewhere else, that's important, because we want to reinvest the latest equipment, and the hospital's not gonna look like St. Joe's or Sacred Heart, those facilities are 50, or maybe even older than that, St. Joe's was built in 75, what is that? 50 years. They aren't gonna look like that, there's modern ways of having a hospital, and we're getting advice from that, sure.
This is a mock-up we had done a little earlier in our study, and it's kind of a modern hospital, and we're thinking about 60 to 70-bed hospital. I think St. Joe's was licensed for, what, 200, maybe?
I think 200, yeah.
You know, it's something, you know, it's a, it'll be a modern building, and it will, the days of people going to the hospital for days and days and weeks, that's over, there's so much done, the, one of the things you do to keep the cost down is get your people in and out quickly, take care of them, send them home. So, it's gonna be right-sized for our community, and it's gonna take the place of two hospitals that, probably 500 beds total, that's what we need, so.
Thank you very much for being here.
Thank you, Chairman.
The board's questions, thank you. If there's no further discussion, we can call the vote on Resolution 29-24. In green button to approve, red to disapprove?
I do have a...
Sorry?
Motion to amend.
I already called the vote.
Yep.
Sorry, people have already voted, sorry. I didn't, I didn't hear it come up before, sorry. Release vote. Okay, the Resolution 29-24 has been approved, and thank you for all your in-depth questions and stuff. Item two is Resolution 30-24, Resolution to authorize opioid settlement with Kroger Company.
Resolution number 30-24, Resolution to authorize Chippewa County to enter into the settlement agreement with the Kroger Company, agree to the terms of addendum two to the MOU allocating settlement proceeds, read by title only, because this page is long.
Randy? You need a motion to put it on the floor.
Omar moves, Garrick second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to approve Resolution 30-24, now we can have discussion.
Thank you, Chair. This is another resolution for the ongoing opioid litigation, this is Kroger Company, Kroger Company, I looked it up, it is the grocery chain, it was asked at executive, yep, 1,300 stores across 35 states, two of the states have settled separately, so this is with 33 of the states, and it would be the same agreements that we've had on the previous settlements, the 70-30 split with the state, we don't know the dollar amount yet, it's done by percentages, but they don't know the exact amount because of some of lawyer fees and stuff like that, so, you know, I've said, talked to the board quite a bit about this, it's been a frustrating thing not knowing all the settlements that are coming, this one we never heard about, it just showed up, so, we can't get a master list, we've looked, I've looked at every website you can imagine, but we do know, this is a similar agreement that we've been talking about.
Any questions for discussion? Okay, and we'll call a vote, in green to approve, red to disapprove. Resolution 30-24 is unanimous. Item three is Ordinance 8-24, Ordinance to amend Section 70-8, 70-68, Section 108, and 70-116 regarding tourist rooming houses, this would be a second reading. You can read any of it, okay, so I guess we'll look for a motion in a second to approve.
Motions, makes a motion to accept.
Okay, do you have a second?
Bergeron, a second.
You have a motion in a second to approve Ordinance 8-24, we have a discussion.
Yeah, hi, I'm back. We talked about this last month, the tourist rooming house, one of the outstanding items that we had left over was keeping a provision within the ordinance that would notify the neighbors of those tourist rooming houses, short-term rentals. Other than that, I'm open to any questions or comments that you have.
Supervisor Bergeron.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, one question I had that really didn't get talked about at committee, and I was, when I was reading back through it, I just had a question. Original, um, I think it was A10. Anyways, it, it's related to the, um, the zoning permit, and it speaks about change of ownership, all of that. And we do have a permitting process built in there, but nothing about change of ownership. Is there any concern about leaving any sort of, is there value in, in Section 10 that's getting struck now that we're missing out on not having something related to that in there, or?
We changed it around a little bit. So, on paragraph six, um, we do have it in there where the permit would expire upon property, change of property ownership. So, we did have it in Section 10, um, or paragraph 10, and if you move up to paragraphs, uh, we have it in there as well.
So, it would be a full expiration, not a?
Yep.
Reapplicator, uh, nothing grandfathered?
It would expire, and then they would have to come in and get it. Because at, at that point in time, that change of ownership, um, if we kept that property notification, then those individuals would need to know who that new property is.
That is covered. You feel that that's good?
Yep, I do.
Supervisor Schubert?
I'm noticing that nine is still struck out. Is that re-edited some?
Um, it, it is not. Um, but if that is part of a motion on the floor, um, we would keep paragraph nine. Uh, and then, uh, any reference to a tourist, tourist rooming house would be, um, modified to or replaced with short-term rentals. Uh, paragraph nine, as it's written right now, would become paragraph seven.
Any more questions for discussion? Yes, Supervisor Bruce, Ron?
I think that's maybe where you were going. It's, um, in, in discussion with that, and even at the committee level, that was something that seemed to be, uh, we were looking to reinstate. So, I would like to make a motion to amend or reinstate paragraph nine with changing out any reference to tourist room housing to short-term rentals.
I'll second that.
Do you have a motion in a second?
Schubert, second.
You have a motion in a second to, um, amend by include, re-including paragraph nine? Any discussion on that? Okay, then we will, we will vote on.
I need a moment.
Okay, sorry.
Voice attack.
You have time for the clerk to enter the, enter the data in there first. What we're voting on.
Do you know this was happening, Doc?
Not at all.
Okay.
Just to be clear, this, this vote will be just on the amendment to, to amend the motion? There's a fair bit to enter here. Pardon?
You want to vote right away?
I don't think there's any more discussion, so. Okay, you can vote now. Again, this is on the amendment to the motion to approve the ordinance. Release. Eighteen, yes. Two, no. So, the amendment is approved. Any further discussion on the ordinance including this amendment? Okay, if no more discussion, we will call the vote then for Ordinance 8 dash 24 as amended. Again, green for yes, red for no. The amendment, the ordinance is approved, 20 to zero.
Thank you.
Item four is Ordinance 10 dash 24, Ordinance to amend Section 58, 39, parent C of Chapter 58 of the Chippewa County Code of Ordinances. This is the first reading.
This is another big change to the ordinance. We, we had done the big change last March, adding a lot more routes. Uh, what we did then, um, if you were here last March, we, we kept all the city and village ATV routes separate. So, a lot of those lines that are struck out here are the city limit and village limit routes. And I went to each of them, asked them what they wanted to do with, with it in their municipality. Um, the exception was I, I did not go to the city of Eau Claire or the city of Chippewa Falls because of the location of those county roads in that, in those areas. But, um, basically, um, all, all the municipalities except Lake Hallie wanted it. And, uh, so that, that was requested by all of them. So, that's what most of those lines struck out are. Um, in Cornell, there was one minor exception that I'm recommending. Um, Highway Double C doesn't, um, end at a good point at their city limits. There's Highway Z, which is already a route another thousand feet down the road. And so, when I talked to them, I said, I'll recommend to the, to the county board that we extend it to there, um, for connectivity. And, uh, they had looked at doing the, following the statute of opening it on their own, because it's 35 miles an hour within the, uh, city limits there. And I, we talked about not having a turnaround or a dead end on the ATV route, and they decided to wait on that. So, in Cornell, um, they also do have permission from the DOT to cross the Blue Bridge and on, on Highway 64. So, they'll be able to get from downtown Cornell out to Double C. So, that'll work really well up there. Um, so then additionally, we had four routes that Paul Cramenour's group requested, um, the Chippewa Valley ATV Council, and that was Highway F in the town of Bloomer, um, between Double A West and Double A East, just a half a mile. And then, um, Highway O in the town of Anson. Um, this is kind of out by the state park, uh, just to the west of the state park through the curves, um, just to get from some residential neighborhoods out to 175th Street. That's six tenths of a mile. And then, um, the other one that meets the criteria was Highway S, um, just up in Jim Falls from Highway Y down to 198th Street, .7 miles. Um, again, that was one that was 35 miles an hour. The town of Anson opted to just let us do it the county way rather than them, um, supersede us with the state statute. So, I appreciated them doing that. Um, an additional route was requested on Highway Double C from Cornell up to Highway M. That's 4.6 miles. And, uh, that actually did meet our safety criteria. Um, but part of our checklist and our applications is we, we require approval from the local towns. And so, Birch Creek and Cleveland each needed to endorse part of that segment, and they both, I think unanimously opposed it. So, they felt it was too hilly, too curvy, too narrow, um, and that there were other ways to get to Highway M and Lake Holcomb. And so, um, Highway Committee did, did follow my recommendation and the town's recommendation of not approving that one. So, that's not on here. Financial impact, uh, it's very minimal. These are pretty much just currently signed as road closed. And so, it's a matter of us going out there this week and taking some signs down and moving a couple route markers around. So, um, the Chippewa Valley ATV Council did pledge to, to fund all this work within the cities and villages and the four, or the three that would be approved, uh, on their request. Um, Highway G there, number seven, is highlighted. We'll talk about that a little in a minute here. Um, so these changes would reduce the number of routes closed from 47 down to 36. Um, that's taking us from 6% of our roads open a year ago up to 70%. Uh, we had 19 miles open a year ago, so we're up to 70% of our roads open now. Um, maybe we can skip ahead.
I only have this one document open.
Oh, um, the map of Highway G. So, um, we looked at this, uh, we received a letter from the Wisconsin DOT, um, somewhat approving a crossing at, at Highway 29 and G, but, um, strongly recommending we don't, don't do it. We could do it if we wanted to. Um, but we, they highly recommend that we don't, and I do as well. Um, so, at the committee, the Highway Committee had made a, a change to, um, based on my recommendation, to go 600 feet each, each side of Highway 29. Um, so they, they approved an amendment there to do that. Um, and Supervisor Peterson lives in this area. He, he pointed out that there's a couple businesses there, um, that would be well-served rather than closing it back at the last intersection. And so, what it actually is, is 600 feet total. And so, it's 300 feet each side of the center line, so that was my mistake. And so, um, the way it's written in the ordinance was based on the intent, or it would be based on the intent of, uh, 300 feet. Right now, it's written as 600 feet. So, if, if we did vote on this at all, um, this meeting or next, I'd be asking, maybe we could make an amendment for that.
Flair makes a motion to amend.
Oh, wait. Sorry, sorry. This is first reading right now, so we're not, we're not taking a vote tonight, but yet.
Erickson makes a motion to waive the second reading.
Well, are we, are we done with the presentation yet, or?
Yeah.
I second that.
Okay, we have a motion in a second on the floor to waive the second reading. Waiving the second reading would allow us to vote tonight.
Correct.
Yeah. N- normally, it's usually for, you don't have to, but I could ask you what the purpose of why, why we would need to do this. Normally, these are exceptions to do, not have standard practice to do this often.
My point is, uh, with the great city of Stanley, which I represent, uh, they, when they reviewed, uh, the ATV stuff, uh, they had such little problems with it that they opened up all the roads in town except for the Chapman Park. And we now have some signs up that say, no UTV traffic, but yet when you come from another direction, there's signs saying that this is a UTV trail. And I mean, it's just ridiculous that this has to go for another month before this can be rectified.
Okay. Thank you for the explanation.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, there's also in my district, District One, there's a section of, of, uh, A that's open, and it's closed for one half-mile in the middle. So, it's dead ends. And people from New Auburn, anybody west of Highway 40 cannot get to the county forests. And again, this would delay it another month, and a lot of these businesses along on that, that area are depending on that.
Okay. All right. Thank you for the explanation. And we'll remind you then for, um, going to, waiving the first vote, uh, on this, or the first reading, going to the second reading, taking the vote, requires a two-thirds vote, just to remind you. Is there any further discussion on, on the proposal to waive the first reading? So, right now, we're, we're voting on the waiving of the first reading and not, not voting to approve. Okay, we have. So, are, are you, are you voting, or you want to speak? I'm.
I want to speak.
Because we were kind of, okay. So, Supervisor Hennick.
You asked for an amendment to change that 300 to 600. Would that be eliminated with an early vote?
600, 300.
Wanted to change that one for a safety issue to go from 300 to 600.
Right.
I think, I think the procedure would be, if this is, if this is approved to take a vote tonight, then, then, then as we, if we're going to take the vote tonight, then that's the time to make amendments to. Right, right now, we're not, we're not voting on it tonight unless we, unless we prove this. Does that clarify things? Okay. Okay, in that case, then we will, we'll take the vote on the waiving of the first reading. Sorry, waiving the second reading is the proper way to do it. Thank you. Okay, you release the vote. Okay, the vote is unanimous. It, um, satisfies a two-thirds requirement.
I'd like an amendment to, uh, correct, change that, uh, 600 feet to 300 feet. At the committee level, we were explained, we, we agreed on these areas. It was just an error in the distances. It, it, the roads turn around, the stop sign, or actually, what we approved, but the distance wasn't correct.
I think a proper order first would be to have a motion to approve the ordinance, and then, then we can have a motion to amend. Since there's no motion on the floor yet to approve the ordinance, is that right? So, so we'll, we'll take a motion to approve the ordinance as written, and then, then after that, first and second, it's on the floor, and then it can be amended. Okay? Sorry, it's procedural. I'm, I'm learning. We're learning on the fly.
Bird's on motions to approve.
Okay, we have a motion to approve. Motion in a second to approve Ordinance 10 dash 24.
Can't be seconds.
Okay.
Okay, so, we did have, we'd have a first and second. So, the motion's on the floor.
Okay, now Flair makes a motion to amend the county Highway G crossing of Highway 29 to show 300 feet instead of 600 feet.
Okay, we know the intent. Get the wording right. Change each of those 600 to 300.
Yep.
Work.
Mm-hmm.
We know, we know the intent is just getting, so it's written right.
Yeah.
Okay, we have, we have a motion. There's a second.
Second Supervisor Flynn.
Okay, so you have a motion in a second to amend, uh, the county G. Any discussion on that? Okay, we, I will then call the vote. We can vote on that amendment. Green to amend, red, you going to leave it the way it is? Okay, we can release the vote. Okay, so the, the amendment is there to modify the description for County Highway G. So, there any more discussion? Questions? Okay. And then we will call the vote. Oh, Supervisor Hennick.
I just want to, I just want to ask for clarity for myself. Is Lake Hallie's roads totally exempt from any changes?
Yeah. Yeah, so anything in orange is what we're approving tonight, and Lake Hallie did not want to approve theirs, so that they would not be changed. This map will just be updated with different colors and put online tomorrow.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, any more questions? Okay, we'll call the vote for Ordinance 10 dash 24. Green to approve. Amended? As amended, yes. Okay, release. Ordinance 10 dash 24 is approved. Thank you. Item five. County Board will go into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statutes 19.85, parent one, parent E. For the purposes of deliberating or negotiating, purchasing of public properties, investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business, whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session, consider real estate attract transactions for parcels, T30N, R6W, and T31N, R6W. I would entertain a motion.
Peterson moves the county board go into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statutes 19.85, one, E. For the purposes of deliberating or negotiating the.
19.85, 1E. For the purposes of deliberating or negotiating the purchases of public properties, investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business, whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session, consider the real estate transaction for parcel T-30N, R-6W, and T-31N, R-6W. Closed session motion to include the County Board, Linda Schweickert, Matt Hansen, Todd Pauls, Tracy Bremness, Jackie Sadler, and Randy Schultz.
We have a second. Okay, a motion and a second. Um, just a question, have we included everybody that needs to be included? Agreement on that? Okay. Do, uh, we will take a vote to go into closed session. Okay, you release. Okay, the vote is 18 to 2 to go into closed session. So we will go into closed session. I don't know.
Better decision you will make?
Just so everyone is aware, all the side chatter is happening, we are live.
We are all back. So I will entertain a motion then. Did you go capture the motion? The first motion. We'll let them read what you said and someone can make the motion.
A motion to grant permission for Matt Hanson, county forester, to apply for grants for the project.
I will make that motion.
We have a motion.
Lots will second.
Motion and a second. Questions or discussion? This would be the motion to pursue the grant. Okay, and we'll call vote. And release. The vote is nineteen to one. In favor of pursuing the grant? And we'll follow it up with a second motion.
Permission or a motion to grant permission to allow Matt Hanson, county forester, to speak to the towns and other NGOs in open sessions about the project.
We have a motion in favor? Motion and a second? Any questions or discussion on that motion? Okay, we'll call the vote then. Okay, and release. Eighteen to two. So we want to engage. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
And thank you for all your questions. Item nine is county board chair appointments, there are none. And as the county administrator appointments, there are none. Item eleven, agenda items for future consideration. The Arnie let us know. And we're down to item twelve.
Erickson will make a motion to adjourn.
A motion and a second to adjourn.
We need to vote. We need to vote.
I can declare. I'll just... The chair will declare the meetings adjourned. Now, we can, we can do it.